Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask the Recording Secretary for a roll call. Here.
Here. Here.
May I have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
I can do it. Delaware Valley School District, in partnership with our community, stands committed to maximizing student potential, fostering lifelong learning, and promoting responsible citizenship.
Thank you. This special meeting has been called to fill a vacancy on this board. Jack O'Leary resigned from our board effective September 9th, 2021. The vacancy was announced that evening. Instruction was given to those that were interested in being appointed to the vacant seat to send a resume and letter of interest to the Board Secretary by September 30th, 2021. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. We will move on to the candidate interviews. The candidates are listed and will be interviewed in the order of when their letters were received by the Board Secretary. We will first hear from Ms. Susan Casey.
It's a procedural question.
So after we hear from each of the applicants, they'll have four minutes to talk, and then we'll take a motion to appoint a candidate. So I guess at that time you would be able to discuss if you wanted to. There'd be a motion on the table, right? Yes, or on the floor. Yep, you can go right to the table. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? So thank you for the opportunity again. My name is Sue Casey. I have served on this board for twenty non-consecutive years, elected by the voters for four terms, and appointed by the board twice to fill resignations for four years. I've served in numerous positions on your board. You have my voting record, and you know that I am a discerning and deliberative decision maker. I'm also aware of the sacrifice board members make as volunteers. I'm ready to sign those financial forms duly disclosing my income and my debt for the next X years. I'm ready to give up my family time, as evidenced by the fact that today is my birthday. I'm a graduate of Delaware Valley. My daughters are DV grads. My one daughter is a teacher at DV with seventeen years of service. This community is very important to me. I have no ulterior motive for seeking the appointment to replace Jack O'Leary other than to avoid the appointment being made in the courts, as happened once during my tenure when the board missed the thirty-day replacement deadline. I believed then, as I do now, that the voters should have a say in the replacement. I offer to this board that if after the November second election you reach consensus that any of the unsuccessful ballot seekers is more deserving of the position than I, I will respectfully resign so that that person can be appointed. Otherwise, I'm happy to serve the balance of Mr. O'Leary's term, and I appreciate your time and consideration of my potential appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next will be Christine Agron.
My name is Christine Agron, and I respectfully submit my name as a candidate for School Board Director. I have been a resident of this district for six years, and both of my boys attend Dingman Delaware Middle School. I have consistently attended school board meetings, both work sessions and regular meetings, over the past four years, and have a profound appreciation for the challenges of leading a school district. Throughout my life, I have volunteered extensively within the schools and the broader community. Currently, I serve as the Treasurer of the DDMSPTA, and previously held the same position for two academic years with the DDESPTA. I have always been an organized and dependable person, and taking on the responsibility for PTA funds has helped deepen those skills while ensuring the integrity of the financial statements. Prior to serving as Treasurer, I was a general PTA volunteer at Dingman Delaware Primary, Elementary, and Middle Schools. I also volunteered at my children's preschool and elementary school in Eastern Connecticut, where we lived before relocating to Dingman's Ferry. Our PTA team has been very active over the years. We've organized and hosted school barbecues, color runs, community craft fairs, book fairs, in-school assemblies, and Veterans Day assemblies. We've served lunches and coffees and organized Appreciation Week festivities for the wonderful staff in all three schools on the Dingman's campus. And last year, when most organizations did not hold events because of the pandemic, our team got creative and figured out a way to host both Pictures with Santa and Pictures with the Easter Bunny events that operated well within capacity guidelines to keep both the volunteers and visitors from the community safe while offering local families a way to continue holiday traditions. While serving on the elementary school PTA, I took on the additional responsibility of the yearbook, and I'm proud to say that I published four successful editions from 2017 to 2020. It was a great experience, which allowed me to strengthen my relationships with both the students and the staff. Prior to having children, I spent ten years managing a human resources team for the Government Industry Group within Accenture, formerly Anderson Consulting. I led a team of six professionals who were based across the country, and my responsibilities included employee relations and conflict management, in addition to day-to-day staffing and supervisory duties. When personnel issues arose, I conducted investigations, worked closely with the employees, as well as with executive management, to interview employees who were present during the incident, determine the facts, and recommend appropriate action. Being part of a team has always been an important part of my life, from sports teams in high school and college to HR teams at work to PTA teams today. Teammates usually have differing individual views and goals, but when there is respect among the team members, when everyone works together and puts the success of the team first, not only is the team successful, but the individuals are as well. I want to be a School Board Director because I value children, all children. They are my first priority, and their education is paramount. The DV schools were one of the reasons that my family chose to move into this area, and I want to leverage my skills and experience to contribute to DV's impressive track record as a district that provides academic excellence, as well as opportunities for the kids to grow into well-rounded, productive adults. I respect the team you've built. I've watched you work together. I've watched you ask each other some hard questions and talk through some very difficult subjects. I've watched you make the right decision for our district, instead of just following in the footsteps of our neighboring districts. In summary, joining the Delaware Valley School Board is a natural extension of my volunteerism. My work in the community, combined with my professional experience, would be a valuable contribution and natural complement to that of the existing board. I look forward to being part of the team. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next will be Brian Fels.
Hey, good evening, guys. My name is Brian Fels. I have three children currently in the school district. I'm a resident of Milford since the early 90s, and I'm a Delaware Valley graduate class of 2000. I have served honorably in the United States Air Force for the past thirteen years, where I've earned a bachelor's in organizational management, as well as my MBA with a concentration in project management. I have experience across all core business functions and operations. Through my work experience, I have developed strong leadership, communication, negotiation, analytical, strategic planning, reporting, risk management, process improvement, and critical thinking skills. As a manager of analytics, I am responsible for designing and maintaining data systems and databases, as well as mining data from primary and secondary sources, and then reorganizing the data in a format that could be easily read and presented. As a thirteen-year airman of the United States Air Force conducting global operations in support of Operation Iraqi Enduring Freedom, I was responsible for managing risk along multiple lines to protect equipment valued in excess of $8 million. In my current and prior positions, my responsibilities have included developing, preparing, and implementing the department's budget. My experience and education have given me the skills necessary to develop creative solutions to any problem. I have volunteered in the community, teaching children and adults how to focus and develop confidence through Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. I have also participated in such projects called Operation Backpack, where we pull together school supplies and stuff backpacks for children in need, as well as participated in Trees for Troops. I look forward to bringing some of these initiatives and new ones back to the community. I believe that children and education should come first, and I believe all of you feel the same way. We may have different ideas on how to get there, but that's what healthy debate is for. I've lived in this area most of my life, received a great education from this district, and I just want to help improve it and help mold our future teachers, doctors, lawyers, and maybe even some soldiers. I look forward to the opportunity to work with all of you in the future, on or off this board. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next will be Lisa Adio.
Hello. I know most of you know me. You've seen my resume, and there's a lot more on there that you've seen, and I'm just not going to. I sit here before you today as a teacher and a community member who is utterly concerned with the state of the things at the Delaware Valley School District. At the start of my career at Delaware Valley over thirty-two years ago, I was proud to say that I was a student and then an employee of this district. They put education and safety above everything else. Now, at the end of my career, I'm disappointed and I'm ashamed to see the board that values politics before its sworn duty to help students be educated. I'm disappointed to see a board that time and time again ignores the recommendations of our administration, our faculty and staff, and I'm disappointed to see a board who refuses to listen to the experts. Do I think this is going to earn me a spot on your board? Not necessarily. But am I qualified to serve as a board member? Uniquely so. I have previously served as a City Council Board Member in the city of Port Jervis. I've also served on the School Board of Trinity Catholic School in Port Jervis. I have had a multitude of leadership positions within our Delaware Valley Education Association. I've negotiated contracts, I volunteer in the community, and I have served as an assistant coach for different sports. But most importantly, and what qualifies me more than any other aspect of my career, is that I have been a teacher at Delaware Valley since 1991. I have seen school board members come and go. I've seen administrators come and go. And yet, I have remained throughout this entire time knowing what the spirit, the feeling of Delaware Valley School District is. Knowing what that undeniable spirit is and what it should be, that is what uniquely qualifies me for this position. As a person who has been here for the length of time that I have, I will safeguard that spirit with my life. Educating students has been my number-one priority since I've graduated from college. I have continued to further my own education by going back to school and getting a master's degree and sixty continuing education credits. I've continued to follow the research developments. I have continued to watch things evolve in education, and I've changed my own practices. And I can guarantee you that things have changed drastically since 1980s, when I started. The beauty of that statement is that I have learned to change. As new techniques and best practices were discovered, I changed my classroom practices to fit the model of laudable education. I followed the data. I listened to the experts. I didn't just follow my own opinion or my own political beliefs. I did what was right, according to the research and for the students. If I were to become a board member, my very first action would be to support the reversal of this latest vote on mask mandates. Research shows that masking does work. And for years, you have a board, as a board, have told teachers to be data-driven in our district, to be data-driven in our practices with our students. And yet, here we are, educators who are data-driven, being led by a board that doesn't believe in research. Here we are with faculty members, staff, and administration, trying to convince the people who are running our district that what you're doing is wrong, and the data says so. I believe in keeping my students safe. It is the number-one priority. It is the number-one priority of all your educators in this district. And you're standing in the way of that. And why? It seems to be that we are allowing political rhetoric and false information to inform the decision of this school board, and that is fundamentally wrong. Because school boards are not meant to be political. School boards are not meant to put aside, I'm sorry, are meant to put aside their personal beliefs and their personal political philosophies in order to best educate all the students, not just certain. So what I can tell you is that if you place me in that vacant seat, I'm going to do everything in my power to follow the data and the research. In conclusion, I urge all the community to go out in November and vote. Vote for board members who believe in data-driven research and believe in the safety of children, all children first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be John Johnson.
Okay, excuse me. Good. Okay. By now, the board should know. Excuse me, by now, the board should have an idea of what I'm all about. I have three kids in the district. I'm running for school board. I work a full-time job, supporting individuals with autism, and a private practice supporting families in their homes, and working with school districts to bring about positive change to their classrooms. When I am not working, I'm campaigning. Last week, I had one of those days where everything went wrong. You know the kind. I was woken up in the middle of the night with an emergency call from a client. My alarm didn't go off. My car battery needed a jump. I almost hit a deer on the way to work and pulled over and realized only half of my face was shaved. Yet, that bad day put me in just the right place. I drove to the nearest gas station to grab a pack of disposable razors and a cup of coffee. And as I'm standing in line to pay for my items, someone taps me on the shoulder. I turn around, and a man said to me, "Mr. Johnson, I don't know if you remember me." I immediately know the face, because more than fifteen years ago, he was one of the very first kids I did in-home therapy with. I'll call him Bobby for privacy reasons. First words out of my mouth were, "Bobby, you have all your clothes on." Bobby smiled. You see, this was an inside joke with Bobby, because on the first day I arrived to his house to do his initial assessment, I walked in, Bobby had thrown a chair through the front window, was naked as a jaybird, smashed a bottle of ketchup, and was smearing it all over the sliding door. Somehow, that day, Mom and I managed to calm Bobby down. And for the next two years or so, I worked with Bobby one day a week in his house. My running joke at the start of every session was, "Bobby, you have your clothes on. Good job." During our conversation, I asked Bobby where life had taken him. He told me he graduated, received a BA in social work, was finishing his masters, he was engaged to be married, and was expecting a baby girl. At some point during our conversation in that gas station, Bobby said to me, "Mr. Johnson, I just wanted to say thank you for not going away." I kind of shook my head, because I didn't really understand what he meant. Bobby said that somewhere around our third or fourth session, I was having a pretty intense behavior, something I had done hundreds of times before, telling you to get out of my house, throwing things, cursing at my mom. You stepped in and redirected me, and I bit you on the thumb, and I drew blood. I said, "Yes, I remember. I remember that, Bobby," and I pointed to the scar on my thumb. And he said, "What surprised me was that you didn't flinch. You looked at me right in the eye, and you said, 'Bobby, I'm not going away.'" And from that moment, I knew you were serious. True to form, you came every Sunday like clockwork. Things slowly got better. My behaviors and grades improved. I stopped being so mad at my mom. I started making friends, and I even joined sports. We eventually finished our conversation. I went back to my car. I looked down at that fifteen-year-old scar on my thumb, and I thought about Bobby. Breaking windows, smearing ketchup on the walls, was all grown up, with a budding family, a degree in social work. He was poised to help hundreds of other people. And maybe a few of those people would help a few more people, and so on. So I can present this board with my list of experience: twenty years in mental health, sixteen years working with kids with disabilities and their families, running anger management groups for teens, seven years working with survivors of sexual abuse, eleven years serving on a human rights committee, a successful private practice, grant-writing skills, consulting with school districts, sitting in on more IEP meetings than I can count. I can tell you how my experience will help to address the sexual harassment and the bullying in our schools, make positive changes to our Title IX, how I can help to serve our students with autism and other disabilities, and find the district money for needed programs. But you know all this, because you already have my resume. But all those years of experience pale in comparison to four words: I'm not going away. If you put me in that board seat, I won't give up on our students, I won't give up on our school, and I won't give up on our community. I will put all that experience to work for this district. But above all, I'm not going away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Douglas J. Mannion, MD. Speaking on his behalf will be Meg Rosenfeld.
Good evening, Delaware Valley Board of Education members. I'm Meg Rosenfeld, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Dr. Doug Mannion, who cannot be in attendance as he's traveling for business. Dr. Mannion has reviewed this statement and has approved it. Dr. Mannion is a resident of Milford, and his partner's daughter is a freshman at DV High School. Doug is a lifelong learner, having degrees in both civil engineering and medicine. He is trained in internal medicine and infectious disease, and is a recognized expert in viral infections. He's taught at Harvard Medical School and Yale University. Dr. Mannion has spent most of his professional life in business, including as a CEO. He is a registered Republican who shares my views about the direction the DV School Board has recently taken on issues of student safety. I will be addressing the consequences of neglecting mental health and civil rights issues in our schools. The pandemic has caused and exacerbated mental health issues. We are seeing increased cases of depression, anxiety, lowered self-esteem, and social phobias, which I believe are the root causes of bullying, sexual harassment, and aggression. Mental health issues should be a top priority, not stigmatized and swept under the rug. It's time we recognize that there are better ways to motivate positive changes. Delaware Valley hired only one additional mental health professional to serve five schools this year. This is grossly inadequate. We have the funds to add at least one full-time social worker or psychologist to every school and must do so if we're going to adequately support the needs of our students. The protests last week related to sexual harassment and assault at the high school were the direct result of our district's refusal to prioritize the mental health and psychological safety of our students. Sexual trauma is one of the leading causes of depression, anxiety, and PTSD in girls, and it can and does manifest in outbursts, anger, and fear. The girls who reported sexual harassment were not offered mental health resources or accommodations by administrators, despite being required to do so under federal civil rights law, Title IX. Instead, administrators referred the girls to law enforcement and suspended the student in question for three days based on the Student Handbook guidelines. Public schools are required by law to publish and circulate their Title IX policy to students and parents in plain language. The policy must include: how to report an incident of sexual misconduct, who the Title IX coordinator is, how to contact them, and outline the grievance and procedure for Title IX complaints. The sexual harassment policy in the Student Handbook is not compliant with Title IX regulations. The handbook neglects to designate the Title IX coordinator in each school and fails to list protocols for investigating and adjudicating a report of sexual misconduct. If you do a quick search on the district's website for "Title IX policy" or "sexual harassment", it yields no results. The only way to find the district's Title IX policy is through an obscure Board of Directors Board Docs platform, which is quite difficult - excuse me - quite difficult to navigate. Administrators must be unaware of its existence, since they are not following the veiled Title IX policy that the board has created. Our district is willfully undermining our students' Title IX rights, putting their physical and emotional health in jeopardy, and forcing them to attend school in a hostile learning environment. However, there are people in our community who are committed to actively addressing this issue. When John Johnson, EK Guyer, and I learned about this issue, we responded immediately by organizing a Zoom meeting, featuring an expert on Title IX as a free resource to students and families. There are applicants tonight who have the ability to address these issues quickly. The current Board of Directors lacks this expertise, and therefore, has not put protocols in place to ensure students and parents are aware of their federal civil rights, which the district is required to uphold. We need informed decision-makers on this board who care about children and who will commit to making a difference. I strongly urge the board to appoint a proactive and qualified candidate, one who has the skills and professional background needed to bring this district into compliance and act in our students' best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Charmee Ford.
Do I have to press it the whole time? Hi, I'm Charmee Ford, and I've been a resident of Milford for about fourteen years and part of the Delaware Valley School District for nine years. My son Lincoln is currently a freshman at DV High School. I believe I'd be a good addition to the school board because I'm pretty personable, a hard worker, I'm an independent thinker, and I work pretty well on a team. I have been committed to supporting various types of students on their personal learning journeys for more than twenty-five years. According to the Board of Education, the three primary purposes of the school board are planning, setting policy, excuse me, and evaluating the results of instruction. I have a good I have a good deal of experience in each of these categories. I have a master's degree in curriculum and instruction with a specialization in instructional design, a master's degree in educational psychology, a doctorate degree in educational psychology with a specialization in program evaluation and measurement. Professionally, I've worked in both the corporate and publication, public education markets, so I'm comfortable collaborating with diverse audiences. I have developed on-the-job training and education for individuals working in retail, manufacturing, automotive, food service, hospitality, auditing, accounting, computer science industries, just to name a few. I currently work for Western Governors University and the College of Health, and that university's focus is on serving non-traditional students through competency-based education, whereas my current focus there has been on developing non-degree programs for students pursuing jobs as medical coders, medical assistants, care coordinators. And I also still work in degree programs primarily in nursing and the health information management and health leadership fields. I also do a lot of contract work for Southern New Hampshire University. During the time in my district, this district, I've been an active volunteer, including being a board member for the Shaola PTA for, I mean, probably three years, two years as vice president, a year as president. I served as the book fair chair for five years. I was a holiday craft chair for two years, a class mom for two years, and I volunteered at a lot of other Shaola school functions as needed, including kindergarten orientation. And Lincoln and I created that original flower board, flower bed outside of Shaola's side door. I think I even made cookies for the board meeting at Shaola a couple times. I've been a Brownie troop leader, a reading tutor, and I've taught Introduction to Psychology at Sussex County Community College. If selected to fill this temporary term, I will work with the board to help clearly define goals for the district, keep the community informed about board actions as well as the district's challenges and progress, monitor fiscal health of our schools, and focus on policies regarding student achievement and work to implement policies to support student success. In particular, I am interested in focusing on students who are not academically motivated. I'd also like to work with the board to develop professional development resources for students. I think I would bring a fresh perspective and energy to the board, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Last but not least is Matthew Contreras.
Good evening. Can you hear, can you hear me? Okay, great. First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to come before you all. And I also want to thank you for allowing the community to continue to express themselves, sometimes at length, including myself. I think it is a healthy thing that we continue to do this, and I appreciate the debate that we've all had. There are two things I'm not going to spend my four minutes doing. I am not going to self-aggrandize myself, and I'm not here to scold you either. I think it's inappropriate. I'm here to say that, I want to tell you about my day today. Today, I spent the day with my son and some of his classmates and other parents on a field trip, and we had a great day. It was beautiful outside. The kids were unmasked and having a wonderful time. Nobody was scolding them because they weren't wearing their masks properly. Nobody was worried about this circumstance or that circumstance. There was a litany of races involved in this outgoing. Nobody was concerned about who was who. They all played together. They all laughed together. We had a wonderful time. It's my belief that the majority of this school board believes that that's the way every day schools should be. You've voted that way, you've acted that way. And as much as I've poked, poked, poked and prodded some of you, you have continued to demonstrate that you truly believe that. I believe that the majority of this board believes that the parents are the primary stakeholders in their children's education, in their children's health, and in the best interests of the, of the children of this district. So what I have to say tonight is that, who do you want to have as an ally on this board moving forward with that in mind? My goal, if I'm chosen to be a part of this school board, is to be your ally, to empower this board to continue to do what it's done, which is to serve the best interests of the children. And I've gotten to know some of you more personally than I knew you before. And, you know, I always have a purpose to things that I do. And I appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to speak with the majority of the community and, and to listen. And I think that's what a school, a good school board's supposed to do. And I have no doubt that this school board will continue to do that. And I will echo Mr. Johnson's thought process. Whether I'm chosen for this position or not, I'm going to be, remain involved. Because when I first became, you know, when I first came before you, I had said that we were culpable as parents also. And I've come to find out that we really are. This is not an easy job. You guys have a lot on your plate, and you don't have a staff. And there's a lot to do here. And the fact of the matter is, the harder times are coming. The governor is going to continue to push back on school boards throughout the state. And this problem is going to exacerbate itself throughout the country as it has been. And you, as a board, need to decide whether you want to have help continuing to fight the fight. And that's why I'm here. And I, and I appreciate you guys listening, as always. You have my qualifications. If you feel that I'm qualified for the board, then I look forward to working with you. And if you do not, I still look forward to working with you as we have. And I hope we continue our good relationship together. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the candidates who submitted their resumes. When appointing a new school, school board member, a majority of all the members of the board, five votes will be needed. At this time, a board member can make a motion for a candidate.
I'd like to make a motion, Jessica. I would like to move that the board appoint Sue Casey to fill the vacancy.
Also, can that...
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to... Thank you, Jessica. Now, it's, it's an awkward and a difficult situation that we're all in as board members because typically, it's the community that goes to the polls and elects members to the school board. And, but sometimes, we find ourselves in this position where we have to fill a vacancy. And, you know, particularly considering how polarizing some recent events have been, it is amazing that we have some extraordinary candidates who have put their applicants, who have put their names forward. We've got some people who would bring some terrific skill sets to the board and who also have a clear-eyed vision of the role that a school board plays, both in the community and in the education of our children. But, all that said, everything being equal, I still go back to the idea that I want to give a preference to applicants who have demonstrated that they've gotten the confidence of the voters. And to that end, Sue Casey has been elected, re-elected, re-elected, and re-elected. And in doing so, I believe, has earned the confidence of the voters. And for that reason, I think my criteria is that I should prioritize that in our selection amongst numerous, well-qualified candidates. I know the kind of work Sue does. She can begin that work immediately. There's no break-in period. She knows exactly what to do. And because of her repeated confidence that she's received from the voters, I'm going to cast my vote for Sue Casey.
Anybody else?
Again, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you. It's not easy to sit here before us and plead your case, basically. Many of you have a lot of qualities that would be very, very advantageous to have on the board. My personal feeling is that it's important that the board remain, have a balance, that we not be one-sided, that we all get a chance to express our differing points of view and then come together for a conclusion. If we all thought exactly the same way all the time, I think that we would really be losing something as a board. I think that our diversity is our strength. If we're all the same, it doesn't really matter. I will also be voting for Sue because I know of her, her knowledge of the workings of this board. She has been on this board in the past, both elected and appointed. And she's dealt with some of the issues that we're going to be dealing with in the next two years. And I think that she will be a definite moderate balance to keep us kind of in line. Thank you.
Anybody else? Julie, can we have a roll call, please?
No.
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 Yes.
Jess, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christine Agron to fill the vacancy.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the one thing similar to Brian is that, you know, everybody's uniquely qualified. The one thing, I don't know Christine very well, but what I do know is that she's been in this board meeting, thick and thin, works. She's probably here more than I have been, actually. You know, because I've had to miss for work and other things. But Christine is always here. She's always helped the PTA, helped kids, and always put kids first, which I truly appreciate. So thank you for that, and that's why she would be getting my vote tonight.
Anybody else?
I'll just add, as the second to the motion, I agree. I think Christine has demonstrated, since we use that word, she's the only one who has applied, to my knowledge, who has been coming to board meetings before the divide in this community. And I think that's important. Everyone who applied is uniquely qualified. All you need to be, all, the only qualification you need to be on a school board is a taxpayer or a parent. And I think everyone meets that qualification. There are, I hope, everyone who has applied will continue to be engaged and bring your perspective to the school board. But I do think that someone who has been here, coming to meetings for years, without actively running for a board seat and without bringing a political agenda forward, deserves a seat on the board.
Anybody else? Julie, can we have a roll call?
Yes.
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 I'm really torn on this. I think that you would probably be a good member, but on the other hand, I'm torn. I'm going to vote yes for the sake of unity on the board.
Congratulations to Christine Agron for being appointed as our new school board member. Moving on to announcements, we will need an executive session to discuss student issues. We will not be returning. There is no work session needed tonight. Upcoming meeting, October 21st, 2021. The regular board meeting at 6:00 PM at the Delaware Valley High School Auditorium. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting and move into executive session?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no objections, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.